Our tech guy back in. You all set? Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think I did say this to Patrick before, but maybe in this year's budget we'll manage to get flags that are of consistent size in each building and somehow displayed a little bit better than that one, so we'll work on that. Thank you all for being here. Item 3.0, recognition comments from the chair. I just have a couple different kinds of comments that I'd like to make. One, you know, Rob Morris left us last month at this point, I guess, and I know his name was mentioned as part of our agenda for last month, but it happened without any recognition from the board, and I would like to recognize Rob and wish him well, at least from my perspective. And there's a business side to education, you know, education is primarily about what goes on in the classroom, but we're also a $27 million enterprise and we have a lot of different kinds of responsibilities and Patrick does in managing both the education output of the district but also keeping the district running smoothly, and I think Rob contributed a great deal to that during his tenure here with the RSU. So if the minutes could just reflect that the board thanks him for his time here in the district and his contribution to the RSU. And the other comment I'd just like to make, and it's not gonna, it's not, I haven't practiced it, so I don't know how it's gonna sound, but, you know, I was listening to a podcast over the weekend and there was a comment made by the guy doing it that, you know, he was talking about loving his kids. Everyone loves their own children, but he, and then he noted that it is a measure of the moral compass of a society to, not only to love your own children, but how you treat other people's children. And I think for this group in particular, that's, is a very, was a very appropriate kind of comment. I mean, I think, I think the job of the school board and the job of education generally is not only to care for, you know, for our blood relatives, but also for the community, the kids in the community, you know, many of whom, most of whom we don't know by name, but we are committed to those kids as much perhaps as we are to our own kids. And so, you know, I really want to thank the board for making that commitment. I want to thank the administration for making that commitment to other people's children and the teachers and support staff of the RSU for making that commitment to other people's kids. I think, I think it just struck me as a very important thing to, for this guy, this podcaster to note, and it struck me particularly that as a society, we think of ourselves in terms of what we give to others and how we treat each other, how we treat other people's children, I think is an important thought, or was for me anyways. So those are my comments. Item 4.0, we have the minutes for the October 30th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Got a motion from Lou, second by Alan. Is it from like no one? Okay, thanks, Alan. Second by Alan, all in favor, or any corrections? Comments? No? All in favor of adopting the minutes? Any opposed? Who set the tables up this way?
Ruston.
It's very hard, it's very hard to see where other two are voting. I have to turn my head. Okay, so any opposed? I think I already asked that. No? Okay, it was unanimous, thank you. Item 45.0, adjustments to the agenda, Patrick?
Yeah, just two things. One reminder is 11.1 is Alice Approach, an action item, and we did send that to you as an email, but you may not have printed that off, so you may have your old agenda. And the second thing is Mr. O'Leary is not able to be here tonight, so we will take off 7.3 presentation, and he hopefully will join us in December.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Patrick. So under Old Business, Alice will become 11.1, and then everything else will just get bumped down one point. Item 6.0, public session. This is our first public session, it's an opportunity to comment on things that are on the agenda. Does anyone in the public want to comment at this point? No? Okay, thank you. 7.0, staff reports.
So we have two presentations tonight. The first one is a, what I would call a foster grandparent program that Jen has had some experience with and also received more information about it recently, and so I asked her to come tonight just to talk to you about the idea that we have, and we're trying to get this off the ground and try this at Dyke Newell and then maybe expand it throughout the district. So thanks, Jen.
Damon, you want a mic or do you have one? Okay. Sorry.
Sorry.
We'll get, we'll get this right. We'll get this right.
So I became interested in the foster grandparent program through PENQUIS because my son has just started kindergarten this year at Coffin School, and I started hearing a lot about Grandma Nan in his classroom, and I was curious who Grandma Nan was, so I talked to his teacher and found out that Grandma Nan is a paid volunteer through the foster grandparent program that is run by PENQUIS. And I had heard a little bit about the foster grandparent program in previous years, and I knew similar things were being done through United Way for some area districts, but it wasn't present in our area. So I reached out to PENQUIS and connected with Maria Staples, who runs the foster grandparent program, and she let me know that this county is one of the counties served by this program. So we set up some time to meet and talk about it further. Maria let me know all the ins and outs of the program. It's a federally funded program that reaches out to community members of 55 years or older. There's certain income eligibility requirements as well, but if they meet those requirements and they're interested in working in schools with children, PENQUIS will train them and will pay them a tax-exempt stipend to come work in classrooms with kids. And so we went through the application process to become a foster grandparents site, and Dyke Newell School is now an approved site for the foster grandparent program. What that means for us is that Maria is now recruiting actively in our area, trying to find some volunteers. We're hoping to get two foster grandparents into the school this year. Those people would be assigned to a particular classroom, they would be supervised by the classroom teacher, and they would meet all of the PENQUIS guidelines around safety and confidentiality and supervision, as well as all of our district and school guidelines about working with kids. And they are in the classroom to build relationships with students, to help them grow, whether it's behaviorally or socially and emotionally, making relationships with other students or even academically, things such as simple as reading with kids, coming in every day and reading with students as part of the work that they hope to do. They have to commit to a minimum of 15 hours a week, they can go all the way up to 40 hours a week, and for some of their foster grandparents, that's an extra $200 or $300, which can make a big difference when you're on a fixed income. So it's great for the foster grandparents and it's great for our kids, and we're really looking forward to getting the program up and running. I've got a few classroom teachers who are already very excited and very interested in welcoming the foster grandparents in once we get those volunteers lined up. So I'll keep you posted as we start to try to recruit and hopefully get a couple of our grandparents into the building.
Great, thanks, Jen.
Any questions for me about it?
Yep.
So when they, if they come in, is it, will they, are they committed to being in one classroom the whole time?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll lock them into, if there's two, into two different classrooms?
Yep, there is a data piece that PENQUIS does where they are supposed to show improvement of the students that they work with, and so we do assign students to the foster grandparent, but we can assign them randomly and anonymously, so student A, student B, student C, they don't have to know their names, so it's confidential, and then we assign a certain goal for the work, maybe it's literacy growth or developing relationships with others, helping to build friendships, and then they kind of track that through their work, so they can't float from classroom to classroom.
So they're in one classroom, and even more so, they're focused on a couple, two, three students.
They have a roster, but they can work with all of the kids in the classroom.
Right, right.
Their data is based on a few kids.
Right, it's based on a few.
Yep.
I'm curious, what's unique about the age of the volunteer? What makes this different from a volunteer program bringing a younger, you know, parent into the, as a volunteer, for example?
I think because they meet a certain age requirement, they're paid on a fixed senior income, it's considered a senior citizen program, even though the age seems relatively low for that. So as long as they're 55 years or older, the base income requirement for a single person household is about $24,000. If there's two people in the house, it's double that, it's $48,000, so they have a couple of factors that weigh into whether they qualify for the program or not, and it's just, those are the federally funded guidelines for the foster grandparents.
Okay. When do you think, when do you think you'll have your volunteers lined up?
I'm not sure. There's a lot of competition for the foster grandparents and not a big applicant pool right now, so Maria is looking to find new locations in Bath and Brunswick where she can reach out to community members and try to find people who meet those guidelines, and also word of mouth, so I've shared it with staff, I'm sharing it with you tonight. Hopefully people might have someone in their mind that maybe meets those requirements and would like to come in and do great work with kids.
Okay.
So I'll let you know when we do have our grandparents.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Any, no, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jen. Patrick?
Next presentation is our, from our STEAM program, and it's good timing, I think, because it was a couple of years ago that you provided additional resources for the STEAM program. We've been able to expand our classes and expand our numbers in the program. So we have with us May, Maria, and we have Ruth Ann Harrison here tonight. And before we start, May was the one that did not make it to our board meeting last month, May Winglass, and she was the Bath, one of the Bath Youth Citizen Award winners. So, you know how you can put a name with a face, so congratulations. So guys, come on up, we're gonna get this started, and I think the students are gonna do most of the talking, and we have a handout for you as well, so.
Yes, I have a handouts here that tell a little bit about the STEAM program, I have a few links that you can go to if you want to learn more about it. This kind of tells you how many students are currently in the program, some of the random projects, what the students need to do and what's needed from the community. So that's just for you to take a look at, and I'll turn it over to the students.
Take your time, guys. No rush.
These are two students who will be graduating STEAM endorsed diplomas this year and celebrating their STEAM capstones.
Can you guys see? Do you see the screen?
You might want to go out there to see it.
So I'm still, could you see through it? That's what.
So for my STEAM project, I worked with Linda Ada Doughty. I worked with her on creating a new marine life center for the work she does. She basically helps rescue seals in need, she also works with porpoises, and her marine life center is really small right now. This is what it looks like right now. This is one of the rooms, right there, where the seals are held, and it's not really beneficial for them, it can only hold four seals right now, and this year we had almost 3,000 seals that needed to be rescued along the Gulf of Maine, and it's becoming a bigger problem with the warming of the Gulf of Maine. And so I worked with one of my mentors, who is an architect, on designing a new marine life center for her, and this is what it could potentially look like. This is just the goal, it's not very ideal, or it is the ideal center, but it's not ideal with cost because it's very expensive. So here are a few pictures of how it would look. In the inside, she wanted it to become more educational, so she could bring in schools and help educate students on how important this new facility is and what it's done for the Gulf of Maine. She wants it to be bigger and be able to hold more seals, so that she can help the Gulf of Maine. These are a few of the pictures of what the interior would look like. It's a 3D model that I created with the help of an architect. This is the animal room where they could, in this center, they could hold up to 27 seals comfortably, which is a lot more than four. They would have a lot better surgery rooms and animal rooms that could really benefit Linda Ada with her work. So that's what my project was about, and I hope that someday this facility gets built and that I can, that I helped her through doing this project.
Can you just explain at what point do you do a capstone project? At what point in the program, in the STEAM program, are you responding, you know, are you doing this project?
So I started off with working with marine life reserves, which are marine life centers but in the ocean, so they reserve a part of the ocean and they protect that part, so there's no fishing or anything like that. But then I moved on to marine centers, so that I could help Linda because she needs a new facility, and I thought it was a perfect opportunity to combine architecture and marine life or marine science to create a project, which is what I'm passionate about.
Actually, my question is, this is your capstone project.
Yes, this is my capstone project.
How does this fit in the STEAM curriculum?
Oh, so STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts and math.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that, but when do you do the capstone project, and what's the relationship between your capstone project and you completing the STEAM, this STEAM program? Maybe I'm not asking the question well, I guess, but.
So Maria, you take classes as part of the STEAM program, but is this your culminating your last type of big project that you do?
Yes, so this is my overall project. I'll be presenting it in January, so that's when it's completely due, if that answers the question.
Okay.
Yes?
Yeah, go ahead.
So is this a plan that she could build from? I was at a planning board meeting recently in Woolwich, I live in Woolwich, and they were asking if she could build, if she could take over a building that's in Woolwich in order to, because she can't use the one in Harpswell any longer. Is this a plan that she could use to build something there, or is it more like a prototype to help her redesign another building she might use?
So this is one of the options, it's, it'll be very expensive, though, so yes, she has to move out of her Harpswell facility for now, so she's looking for another place, but this would be, I guess, her dream building. I worked with her on her ideas, this is her ideas mixed with mine, and I created this for her, so that she could put her ideas into real life.
Does this, does your design, is it, does it need to be located next to the ocean for a lot of water reserves for the facility?
No, actually, seals can live in freshwater, so she wanted to be in Brunswick, in a city area, so that she could have city water.
Yep.
But that would be her goal, it's, nothing's certain yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So when did you start, when does the, when do you start on the project, on the capstone? Did you start last year or did you start this fall?
I started it last year with working with her, and then over the summer, I met with an architect and went through all my ideas and plans, and he helped me create all of this.
Are you, you're going on, you're a senior?
Yes.
And are you, have you made a college selection, or?
No, I just finished applying to all my colleges, so I'm just.
How do you, how do you think this will, how do you intend to present this as part of, you know, the next step in your education?
I think that this, since I want to go into marine science, I think that this helped me a lot. I had to do a lot of research on my own and learn how to do research on my own, and I think that's gonna help me a lot for college.
Good, good, great.
Is that it?
You sound, you sound pained, you know? We may call you back. Go ahead, you can pass the mic off.
Hello, everyone. My name's May Winglass. As Ms. Harrison said, this is my third and final year in the STEAM program, and my project was a study of how mood, or rather, how music affects mood and productivity. It was less visual than that, so I'm just gonna sort of talk at you for a moment. But essentially, I'm taking a couple subjects that are also in the STEAM program, primarily juniors and sophomores. We all have a study hall, which is dedicated to STEAM together, and so in that study hall, I, we sort of gather up and then at the beginning of the period, listen to either Mozart, rock or jazz, and then I hand out a survey, and at the end of the period, they sort of take down how they're, how they're feeling on a scale, which was actually given to me by a Bowden professor, which my mentor sort of set me up with, which was great, and then that data will be collected and compiled, and then I'll sort of see which one helps out the best. And that's compared against a control or a baseline, which I did at the beginning. And that's going on right now, so I don't have any sort of results for you yet, but that's where we're at.
Maybe we should play music at board meetings, is that what you're suggesting?
That was actually, depending on my results, one of my plans was to, if I found a definite result, was to potentially come back and present to the board, maybe to integrate Mozart into everyday education or something of that sort, or rock or jazz.
Did you, did you start with some hypothesis of what you thought it would be, or did you, how did you come up with that?
That mix.
Yeah, that mix, because there's, some research has been done for, but did you have an idea of what you think it's going, or did you just say, I'm just gonna go with it?
My hypothesis is that Mozart will be the most effective, based on some background research, in terms of, it helped a lot. I think in schools, it, or rather, in studying, it was something about the 60 beats per minute in the, in the music, which helped students remember things more, so playing it while studying, which I've started to do since learning that. But, so that, I felt would in turn help with productivity and then maybe help with mood along the way, so we'll see.
Great.
So it's both mood and productivity?
Yes.
And what are some of your metrics? What are some of your measures?
In terms of, I'm trying to think, in terms of emotions, the chart that was given to me, I think there's, I want to say like 14 to like 20 different emotions, and you sort of rank it on a scale of one to five, and he actually, he said that I, once I have everything gathered, I could just send it over to him, and he has something that he can run it through, which'll pop out results pretty quickly. And then in terms of productivity, I just have sort of a personal, one that I made just like a rate, one to 10 scale, five being average, one being low, 10 being high, just sort of where you were at for that period.
Okay.
And does the volume of the music have anything to do, to study, is one type of music played at a different volume compared to like the background noise?
Sure. I, the way that I did it was just sort of surrounding which type of music, so I have all the musics played, or all the different genres played at the same volume in the same environment, like doors closed, everyone sitting around the table, right in the center. I'm reading from that, so, yeah.
So I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked Maria, maybe you won't be quite so pained as, this is your capstone project, it's a research project, how do you think this is going to help you in your next educational experience moving forward?
Sure. I think, I honestly, I think it really helped me sort of center what I was really interested in, because obviously we have to take a lot of core classes, so when I was figuring out what I wanted to do for an independent project, I sort of realized that psychology was something that I was really interested in, and I, we only have one psychology course offered at Morse, so it gave me an opportunity to sort of learn more about that and get into something that I really enjoyed. So I think it helped me sort of get to, get to a place where I knew what I wanted to do, so I think that'll help me in the sense that I know what I want to do going into college, and I think also having the background research capabilities will benefit me as well.
And really, a question, just a question for both, I mean, as you deal with your peers and also undergraduates that you come in contact with, I mean, what's your, what's your overall, you're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come to a conclusion that your overall reaction to the STEAM program has been positive, and are you able, do you feel you're, you're good ambassadors to pass that on to your, you know, your peers and undergraduates coming up? I mean, is this something you recommend that other students look at closely as a way to finish up their programs at Morse?
Yeah, definitely. I think, like I mentioned before, it allows for sort of an individual approach to something that, or rather, a, a chance to focus on something that you might not have a chance to focus on otherwise, and an ability, or rather, an opportunity to explore something that you might have not had the chance to otherwise.
Do you have anything?
I was going to say that I think the same as May, but also I think that this provides a, it's kind of like doing your own schooling outside of school, but what you're mostly focused in, so I think that it'll help with college, knowing what you want to major in, just being really prepared to do all on your own. I think that it helps me a lot, and I definitely recommend it when I'm underclassman, ask me about it, I definitely recommend it.
And do you think it helped in, as you said, you applied, you've like sent out all your applications, I assume either you have, maybe you already know where you're going, but did you feel having that kind of diversity that high school students don't always have, did it help you when you were filling out your application, when they ask you, you know, for the essays and all the other things? Did it seem like, oh, I have a lot to write about because of that, or did it not make a difference?
Yeah, part of my college essay was about STEAM, actually, and how it really helped me as a person, and how it helped just develop my researching skills, my passion for marine science, and how it helped me actually discover my passion for this, and know that that's something I wanted to go into.
That's great.
Yeah, I'd say the same. I actually, I had to write two college essays for English. One of them I wrote specifically about STEAM, didn't end up using that one, but it was still something that I definitely considered adding to my application. And I think it, it also helps in terms of clicking what major you're planning to go into, rather than undecided, or like maybe English. I was pretty confident with psychology.
Beautiful, that's great.
It's not disparage, English, it's a college major now. That's great, that's great. Any other, any comments or questions?
Great job.
No, I think this is, thank you very much for coming, it's great. I mean, this is, the initiative is what, two years, three years old?
Three.
Three.
This is the third year.
Three, three years, and I know we, we sort of gingerly moved into it, we're still kind of really only have, well, we have more than a toe in at this point, perhaps, maybe we have a whole foot in, but I think, I think what the two of you have shown is, is very encouraging, that it was a program worthwhile for, for the district to take on, and who knows, maybe we'll get our whole leg wet at this point, so, continue to expand. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
And thank you, Ruth.
So guys, you don't need to stay, thank you for coming, thank you for being our guinea pigs in the STEAM program, and May, let us know what you find, and maybe we'll consider piping it into the new school, okay?
Thanks. Okay, 8.0 committee report, say 8.1, building project update.
Yeah, just a brief update. November 30th is now the date that we go up to the Department of Education Subcommittee Meeting, and December 12th is the full State Board, and that is for final approval of the budget and the construction of the project. We did have a, probably a, probably a three or four hour meeting last week with Julie, Eric, Dave, and I, and Ron, just to go over the plans one last time, to make sure that we had every classroom, every nook and cranny, every office, everything that we needed in that building. So, we feel really good about it, we feel a lot more organized, and what's going to happen in the next couple of weeks, I think, is that budget process, where we'll communicate with the state, they'll communicate with us about, there may be some items that we thought were state-funded that might be locally funded and vice versa, but I'll keep you apprised as we go through that process.
Thanks, Patrick. Any, any questions of Patrick on the building project? No?
So you're, I mean, so you're feeling pretty confident? You don't have any?
In conjunction with the, the building committee report, I, I was truly fascinated this past week, and very gratified, that our design engineer had actually traveled to Chicago, met with the number one security expert in the country for school safety, and brought back ideas for there, from there, for our administrators and our staff. It, it's part of the project, and an important part of the project, and it was very gratifying to know that it's an integral part of the project as we go forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think we feel fortunate, Lou had asked the question if we feel in a good place, I think we feel like we're in a great place right now, and to echo Bill's comment, our engineering firm is, again, architectural firm is one of the best, not only did they, they're always going out and learning more, but we were talking about an autism room last week that will be in the new high school, and just talking about the type of furniture that would go into that room that could be moved, and just some really, you know, interesting ideas that, that I don't know that we would have thought of, that are, you know, cutting-edge technology that can be used, cutting-edge furniture. So it's just a, again, it's a firm that's a pleasure to work with, both Crocker and with La Valley, and, and one other thing I'll mention is we are going to visit Sanford High School between now and the holiday break, just to get some ideas, not to change anything drastic, but to get some ideas.
Thanks, Patrick. Okay, 8.2, Katie, curriculum assessment and instruction update.
Okay, just really quickly, as I know I spoke for a while at the last meeting, there are a lot, there's a lot going on right now with different committees, and so I'll just report on sort of three big things that are happening. First is really exciting, we were asked to join the Maine Maritime Public Programs Committee at the museum, and so I'll be sitting on that committee and sort of helping coordinate, making sure we have a strong connection with the museum, and continuing our programs that happen in second, fourth, seventh, and hopefully soon to be 10th grade as well, which is exciting. I'm sure some of you know about boat building, and some of the fisheries trips that the students get to go on. And so, they were looking for representation from the district, and so it was great to be, we hit our first meeting this morning, it was great to be a part of it, and I think we can sort of strengthen those connections and make sure that our students are really getting a sense of, sort of the culture and the industry in the area that's been so important to where they're growing up. And also get them out on the water, because many students live here, but never actually get to go out on a boat, which I know for some of us seems crazy, but it's the truth. And so they were actually talking about how neat that is to see when students get to do that for the first time. So I'll keep you updated on projects going on with them. Next, I know for the last year, I've been talking to you about how we're really looking at our reading instruction, and in the budget that was passed last year, rather than look, we've been working for many, many years before I arrived on our writing instruction, money was spent on curriculum for that, and also on professional development for that, and this year, we started our reading focus. We have a great committee of K through five teachers that are doing that work. Our consultants through the company Logos have been coming to our buildings, and teachers have been very happy with the training they're getting. I think the one piece that I will be talking to you about soon is what we will need to purchase, to make sure that our classrooms are fully updated with the literacy resources that they need, both through lesson planning resources, as well as updating classroom libraries with high-interest books for our students. And so, I know we're having our budget retreat soon, so more to come on that, but it's all really exciting work. I also wanted to just talk a little bit about that Julie and Eric and I have started just some initial stages of a scheduling committee for the new high school. You all know that right now, we have three lunches, we will be moving down to two lunches, which means we will have to look at what that structure is going to be for when the school opens, to make sure that whether, you know, how we shift the waterfall, if there are other ideas that people want to consider, and so that's something that's upcoming. I am going to probably ask a board member to, to join some of our conversations, so we can make sure that the community and the board is fully represented, in case, I have no idea if we'll stick with the exact same thing and just tweak it slightly, or if it'll be a larger change that the teachers want to consider. The plan right now, in terms of representation, would be both be our CTC representatives that are teachers, as well as Julie, and then representatives from the high school from each department. So, we have, it's, it's actually a fairly large group, and then I will be the one facilitating the meetings, and then a board member as well. So, that's not actually starting, and I want to say January is our first meeting. We're going to try to not do one hour after school, but try to find larger chunks of time where we can really dig in to some models and ask some deep questions about that. And then, I know that last year, we did a presentation, and I believe it was one of your board goals, on teacher evaluation, and we talked a lot about the changes that were taking place. I just wanted to give a positive update, that the new system that the teachers have implemented this year seems to be going very well, that principals are on top of all their work with having meetings with teachers and doing their observations, and that people seem pleasantly surprised and sort of happy with how the committee, the teacher, teachers, the committee of teachers was able to simplify the system and really make it more manageable, so it felt like they were going to be getting good feedback, and it didn't just feel like more paperwork, which is great. And then finally, next month, I'm going to have Julie come and speak a little bit at length, and take my spot probably instead, about the Melmat Mac Grant that we received, because I know you've heard a little bit about it, but there's just so many neat components about it, that I think you'll all be really excited about, so more to come on that. Any questions?
Questions for Katie? No?
Okay, great.
Okay, thanks, Katie. Okay, 9.0, we have both student board representatives here tonight, which is, which is wonderful. So Sydney, Hayden, do you have any comments you want to make to, to the board at this point? Grab a mic. No, get him, just get. Nope, he can use, you can use the handhold, sure.
So, I'll be beginning with The Tempest, which was Morse's first large production during the fall. It ran very smoothly, and I know that there was a very good turnout from both students going to the play, and their parents, as well as teachers, and I know that, and I felt that the cast did a very good job at modernizing a Shakespearean script, which made it more relatable, I feel like, to the audience. And I'll be passing it over to Sydney.
Yeah, and we just had our Mohiba finish up, and I thought that went really well. I did participate in this, this year's production, and I thought it was a wonderful way to honor Priscilla Montgomery, and a good way to like kick off our winter season with the talent from our school, which I thought was really cool.
Good, good. Are there any, is there any college anxiety flowing around, or is it too soon for that?
Definitely, there's actually been quite a number of on-the-spot days for colleges around here, which have been going very well for a bunch of my friends personally, they've been accepted into a bunch of colleges that they have applied to, which is very cool for them, and definitely, senior meetings have, I do believe they've finished out, but they've definitely gone, gone over well with helping all the, all of our seniors plan for what's up, what's coming up next, and I definitely know that all of, almost all of our English classes for our seniors have been working on our college essays, to help us get those down, so that we have the, like, our best foot forward to put towards a college, which I think is really cool.
Okay, any questions from the board, from the other board members, the two students? Great, thank you very much for, for your, your input. 10.0, superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a couple items. Right now, we're in the middle of parent conferences, and the signup numbers are very high, which is great, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout tonight and tomorrow afternoon. Two sportsmanship awards from this fall, I know we reported out on how, how the teams did, but after that, we've had sportsmanship awards for boys soccer at the high school, as well as football. Just a couple things to mention, bringing the community into our schools, and some examples of that recently was Veterans Day, recognizing veterans at the vocational school and high school, as well as at Woolwich, and grandparents luncheon, which unfortunately, one of them had to be canceled last Friday, because who knew that we would have a snow day in the middle of November, but hopefully we'll reschedule that. Thanksgiving meals, and also giving back to the community, our students have done that in a variety of ways, most recently at the local food banks. Let you know about a meeting we had with Chawonki over the last couple of weeks. We do quite a bit with Chawonki district-wide, except for the high school, and so we had a really beneficial meeting with the high school staff, a small group of staff, and just looking at how we can continue that, that valuable relationship coming up through, and some suggestions, anything from looking at our advisory program, to looking at our outing club, to looking at just utilizing some of their resources even for team development at Chawonki, as some beginning ideas. And then just lastly, Lou, Steve and I, I can let them talk to it as well, but we went to a meeting, three weeks ago maybe, with SAD 75, Lisbon, RSU 5, SAD 75, and West Bath, and just continuing those conversations about collaborative efforts that we can do together as districts. So some ideas were transportation, professional development, special education, and also board training. So we have talked, and we have actually set up a board training, I don't know all the logistics of it, but it's going to be in January sometime, of kind of like an orientation for all board members, and then some board leadership training as well. So, Steve or Lou, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but that's all I have.
I think the meeting, the meeting in Brunswick was a, was a positive one, some constructive ideas out there, but I think Patrick pretty much captured what, what, what happened, and certainly, as, as things become more concrete, we'll bring ideas back to the board, so. Okay, thanks, Patrick. Deb's not here, so 10.2, financial report, the, the report was distributed as part of the board packet, if folks had an opportunity to look at it, and if there are any questions or comments, Patrick will either answer them, or we'll find Deb on the road, wherever she is, and, and bring her back. Any, any comments or questions on the financial report? I think Deb would say we're pretty much on target as far as our, our spending goes, and. Any comments? No? Okay, thank you. 11.0, old business. So, the, the first item of old business goes back to the presentation we had last, at the last meeting on Alice, and I thought it was a very, very comprehensive presentation. I'm thankful, grateful that the, the public service, public safety representatives were all, were all present, and I think added, and to the conversation. I just want to make sure there are no comments or questions that you might have outstanding on that, because we are going to take up as 11.1, a motion to approve Alice as a component of the district's overall safety plan, so I am going to ask to get a vote on that. So if not, if, if I could, I'll, I'll, well, can we make, we should put the motion in probably, and then, and then have discussion on it. So, again, if I can, I'll, I'll repeat the wording that I just gave, so the, the motion would be to approve Alice as a component of the district's overall safety plan, do I have a motion to that? Okay, a motion by, or by Bill, second by Lou? Okay, discussion, Jen?
And I apologize, I was absent from the last meeting, but I did read the board minutes, and the training that's gone on so far, has that reached the elementary school level?
No, and we're, we're just starting. No, and we're, we're just starting six through 12, and actually, we made a decision as well, talking to Jason, that we would move forward if the board approves this, as part of our overall safety plan, with BMS and with Morse, just because Woolwich, I mean, because they're in the same building, you know, we'd have one floor doing one approach, and two other floors doing a different approach, and so we thought that we would wait. So I mean, the thought process was that maybe by the end of this year, we would, we would be ready to begin to bring that training down to, to K through five, but it all depends on timing. I mean, our next steps with this one would be parent meetings, more staff training, and student orientation, and then we'd have to see whether it's a year out from now, or if it's later, whether it's gonna work well for us. So it's just for six through eight, and nine through 12.
And I apologize for my ignorance again, but is it, is Alice approved for elementary grade levels, as well as upper grade levels?
Yeah, I mean, there's many school districts that use it pre-K through 12.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're just taking a, I'm, I'm not gonna say a go-slow approach, but a thoughtful approach to implementation, and, and I think Patrick, as, as he explained, you know, the thought was that we're much better positioned right now to do it at the, at the middle school and high school level, and, and give some more thought to how to approach the younger kids, so. Any other comments, or? No? If not? Okay, do I have, we've got a motion and a second, so, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, eleven point two is the second reading of Policy DKC, expense authorization and reimbursement, and this is an action item. Do I have a motion to approve this policy?
Wait, isn't the next one the cash management?
Oh, you're right. I jumped. I'm sorry. So it's the second reading of DMA, which is cash man, cash management for federal funds. Still an action item.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion by Alan, second by Lou, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. And now we'll get to expense authorization and reimbursement, Policy DKC. Do I have a motion to approve? A motion by Megan? Second? By anyone? No? Second by Lou? That's why there's a vice president of the board, you know, always step in with a second, so. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you. And second reading on Policy JLDBA, suicide prevention intervention and response. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Lou, second by Alan. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Any opposed? Actually, if we could pull the vote back, well, we don't have to pull the vote back. I did have a question on gatekeeper training. Could someone explain what gatekeeper training is? Maybe, you know?
I'm, I mean, Katie jumped in here as well, but gatekeeper training to me is, you know, suicide prevention, understanding the nuances of it, and so that you recognize the signs. Katie, do you want to add more to that?
Yeah, and it's more about, like, the training and training. So, we'll have people who go for active gatekeeper training, and we help those who have the home element for them, and they are the ones who are trained.
Yeah, okay. It's just it's capitalized in the policy, so it's a, it is a formal...
Yeah, the LD60I.
Yeah, that's, that's how they phrase it.
Okay, so it's a formal training program.
And, and those who are trained at a state level, will go and get that, that will train, um, what we do.
Okay, okay. Thank you. All right, so we've already, Jen?
There's just a, I think there's a misspelling there. Intervention and, is that postvention, is that correct?
Well, I, I read the word twice, and I, I could figure out what it meant. Post, postvention, I guess, means after the fact.
Okay.
You know, dealing, I've never seen the word before.
My brain was saying prevention, so postvention, I was thinking it should be prevention, but no, okay.
You can check it, although, although I, I created a meaning for the word, so that
it works.
All right.
Yeah, that's, that's what education is about. We make up words as we go along, so. Eleven point five, review of board goals, Jen?
Yeah, a postvention is prevention conducted to act.
Oh, lovely words.
Specifically, specifically to that subject there. Wow, okay, that's why we have...
So review of our goals. Our goal, our goal number one addresses the building project, and Morse Building Project, and we've got an update on that one during this meeting today, eight dot one. The other goal I wanted to talk to people about is goal number three, which is our goal around learning more about childhood ACEs. I was just talking to Anita, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about after this meeting, and hopefully bring some information to Patrick and to Steve, so, in terms of getting some board education on that, working on providing some options for that training.
Thanks, thanks, Jen.
I would love to ask you, we definitely have training in RCI committee, and we have teachers who know a lot about, you have to, you have to, you have to...
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you, thanks. Twelve point O, new business. We have a out-of-state, out-of-country field trip request for Morse High to visit Quebec City. Sounds like a great trip in the spring.
Is do all the kids have to, and staff have to get passports? Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And the expense of that, have you picked up by each family or each student?
I don't know who you're...
No, I don't know the answer to that, Bill, but I can find out. Yeah.
This is a...
And I should know the answer, because this is like the third or fourth year. Hayden, do you know?
I know in the past that each family or each student who's going on the trip is at the responsibility of acquiring their own passport if they didn't have one already.
It's important in today's world.
I don't know, I, I'm, I'm not...
Yeah, there is a card.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
For candidate, you can get a...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not completely versed, but you, but you don't need a passport, I believe. There's, there's another, yeah, there's another legal travel document that you can obtain, so. But Patrick will report back to us on that.
You don't want to lose any students.
Okay, so this is an action item, so do I have a motion to approve this? Lou makes a motion that we approve this out-of-state request.
Second.
Bill seconds. Any comment, discussion further? No? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay, thank you. All right, so eleven, or thirteen point O, we have the second public session. Does anyone want to comment on anything at this point to the board? We've chased everyone out of the room, so. Okay, thank you. Fourteen point O, next meeting date and location. So we're finally gonna make it down to Phippsburg, Bill.
Yep. We're in Florida.
Yeah? So our next meeting is scheduled for December 17th, down in Phippsburg at six o'clock, and, and that will be the last meeting of, of the year before the holiday. There's a lot of...
When is, what do you have it, December?
Seventeenth.
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 Yeah. There are a lot of holiday events coming up, as you can see by the, the calendar, the upcoming event block just below, and I know that as board members, we make every effort to try to get as many, to as many of us as we can, hopefully, and, and at least give that board presence in the community, so.
I'm trying to show my, push your shoulders.
And if not, before I make a motion to adjourn, wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and I don't know when Hanukkah comes this year.
Early, it's early.
Yeah, so I wish everybody happy Hanukkah then, because I think by the time we, by the time we have the next meeting, Hanukkah, Hanukkah will be passed, so. Happy Thanksgiving, happy Hanukkah, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, no.
All right, we have a motion from, from Alan, second by Lou. All in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you very much.
Hey, unless somebody's dying to be on...